I am Uchenna Chimdi Oloha. In the headlines, Executive Director of Yaga Africa says new INEC chairman must be of impeccable character. Former administrator of River State under probe. South Africa stages 2,500-person bribe in world record bid. A new Thai Foreign Minister calls for troop reductions with Cambodia. Details in a moment.
Every second, every minute, every day, news is breaking. Events occur and there are new developments. At Signature TV, we follow these stories objectively, bringing all sides without bias, explaining the complex issues, breaking down the numbers, and investigating the issues behind the news. Anywhere and everywhere, near or far, wherever the news is, we will be there. Signature TV. News in your pocket.
The Executive Director of Yaga Africa, Sam Sin Itodo, has emphasized the need for Nigeria to appoint a person of impeccable integrity as the next chairman of the Independent National Electoral Commission, INEC. Itodo, who featured on a live television program, noted that the remarkable reforms recommended by INEC had been dampened by electoral fraud. He stated that whoever succeeds the current INEC chairman, Mamu Diakubu, must be non-partisan and possess the courage to uphold the rule of law regardless of political pressure. Itodo further noted that while INEC has implemented significant reforms in recent years, the impact of these efforts has been undermined by persistent electoral malpractices. The Enugu State government has called on all eligible residents to fully participate in the ongoing continuous voter registration exercise of the Independent National Electoral Commission, INEC. In a statement issued in Enugu, the Commissioner for Information and Communication, Dr. Malaki Abu, emphasized that the exercise offers a vital opportunity for citizens who have attained the age of 18, or those yet to be registered, to be duly captured in the voters' register. He noted that the exercise also accommodates registered voters seeking to transfer their registration, correct errors, or replace lost or damaged PVCs. Abu maintained that voting is both a civic duty and a fundamental right, and that the voters' card is the voice citizens have in shaping the future of the state and the nation. He said that by registering with INEC and obtaining the PVC, voters empower themselves to actively contribute to the democratic process and the progress of Enugu State and the country. The commissioner therefore urged traditional rulers, community leaders, religious institutions, civil society organizations, and the media to intensify mobilization and sensitization efforts, particularly among the youth, to ensure that no eligible voter is left behind. At the national public hearing on constitutional amendments, women advocacy groups rejected that women be confined to the other room as recommended by late Nigerian president Mohammed Ubohari. The women demanded a place at the parliamentary table as equal stakeholders in Nigeria's development. Correspondent Chimeseze Zedimari reports.
Only four women sit in Nigeria's 109-seat senate. Fifteen of them sit in the green chambers of the House of Representatives, which has three 16 members. In some state assemblies, there are none at all. At Monday's national public hearing on constitution review in Abuja, women groups demanded reserved seats in parliament, describing the current situation as unjust, patriarchal, and a loss to national development.
What we are having is male representation. We want to correct the imbalance of the kind of decision-makers in our population. The quality of the decisions is because when women and men are together, boys and girls are together, they'll be able to talk about their issues. We want issues of national development. Nigeria is losing a lot, you know, in keeping women away from the... We have a lot of... Are women are suffering, just like men are suffering, but women are suffering more...
The call for gender inclusion was backed by statistics and strong arguments. Less than 5% representation in both the national assembly and state legislatures, an imbalance not supported by international conventions or any sense of justice and equity.
This is a temporary measure. All we are proposing is give us 4 cents. Let's see, how do you know? It's just to... Let me just... What? It's like an awareness session that women can actually do it, so that it gives us a more representation, better inclusion, and also better seats when it comes to making decisions that impact women particularly.
Others stressed that their push was not to turn the culture table, but a temporary mechanism to correct historical imbalance. Beyond numbers, participants framed the issue as a matter of democracy itself, pointing to women's near absence in legislative chambers across the states.
Far at our State House of Assembly, only one is a woman, and these are decision-making places where policies that govern economic growth, social integration, education, health, and a lot of other areas are made. So it's important to me specifically because it's to show that there will be more inclusion in governance and we have more chance of representation and for more voices of women to be heard.
From the grassroots came stories of struggle. One human leader from the FCT noted that out of six two-word seats, she is the only woman. She described the fight to secure the seat as evidence of barriers women face under Nigeria's patriarchal system.
All we are asking is that women be given a seat, just a seat to be created for women from every state and every... From every parliament, that's all we are asking. I myself, for instance, now, we have two words in FCT, and I happen to be the only female. Sixty-one male and one female, which is very unfair. So if you have such seats, an extra seat, we'll be sure at all time, even my was even at... It was even... It was even confrontational in order for me to have even gotten that position. Then if you have this, if this has been approved, we are besetting that one seat at all time, a female will occupy a particular seat.
With the constitution review now spotlighting gender inclusion, women leaders say Nigeria must choose. Continuing sidelining half East population or adopt reforms that bring more voices to the table and more options to national development. In Abuja, I am Chimeseze Zedimari for Signature TV.
The federal government has unveiled the official theme for the country's 65th Independence Day celebrations, which comes up on the 1st of October. In a statement on Wednesday, the Director of Information and Public Relations in the Office of the Secretary to the Government of the Federation, Shegun Imohe Sen, said the theme is "All hands on deck for a greater nation." Imohe Sen stated that the theme indicates the need for unity, collaboration, and patriotism among government institutions, the private sector, civil society, and citizens to advance national peace and prosperity and progress. He explained that the choice of theme reflects Nigeria's resilience since independence in 1960, stressing the importance of consolidating past achievements while pursuing loftier goals under the Renewed Hope Agenda. According to him, government agencies and partners are expected to align their programs with the anniversary theme to ensure its message resonates across all spheres of national life. Some of the activities lined up for the date include a Jumat prayer on Friday, September 26, followed by an interdenominational church service on Sunday, September 28, and a World Press conference on Monday, September 29, in Abuja. The senators' will on 7th October 2025 decide if the suspended lawmaker Senator Natasha Boteudan will resume her official duties or not. The consultant's communication and strategy in the office of the Senate President, Kenny Okolowo, disclosed this in an interview on Wednesday. The lawmaker's office was unsealed on Tuesday following the completion of the six-month suspension. It is however unclear if the lawmaker has been allowed to resume her official legislative duties despite pending court cases. The 2023 Labour Party presidential candidate, Peter Albi, has challenged the federal government to show evidence of disbursement of 1 trillion naira to micro, small, and medium enterprises, MSMEs, in Nigeria since 2015. In a post on his verified X handle on Wednesday, Albi said that most Nigerians are not aware of any such disbursement. He stressed that over 80% of the citizens are not aware of the existence of the Development Bank of Nigeria, which released the report. According to him, the level of knowledge about the existence and utility of such an institution is directly proportional to its impact on the people it is meant to serve. He said that if indeed such an amount was deployed to support enterprises, the results should be evident. President Bola Tunabu has conferred national honors of the commander of the Order of the Niger, posthumously, on four former Ogoni leaders. Tunabu conferred the honors while receiving the report of the Ogoni Consultations Committee. He urged the people to embrace reconciliation and unity after decades of division. The recognition came 16 months after Tunabu pledged to pursue diligently and honorably the Ogoni cleanup project and expand empowerment programs to benefit more indigents of the oil-rich community. Former sole administrator of River State's retired vice admiral Ibok Ete Ibas visited the Presidential Villa in Abuja on Wednesday amid growing calls for the probe of his six-month tenure. Ibas arrived at the villa, shortholding a set of documents shortly after the Minister of Finance and Coordinating Minister of the Economy, Wale Edoon, also arrived the villa. The chairman of the Economic and Financial Crimes Commission, EFCC, Olah Olukoyede, was also reportedly present at the villa, an indication that his tenure is under scrutiny. The visit comes amid mountain pressure on Ibas to give a detailed account of how he managed River State during the six-month emergency rule, which ended on September 17. The speaker of the River State House of Assembly, Martin Ameweli, had announced plans to probe the state's expenditures under Ibas's administration. Up ahead, three soldiers receive life sentences for selling arms to terrorists, five communities in Kogi submerged by flood. Details of these and more after the break.
News in your pocket.
A special court martial of the Nigerian army in Medugri Borunu State has sentenced three soldiers to life imprisonment and a fourth to 15 years for illegally selling arms in collaboration with police officers and terrorist groups. The trial was presided over by Brigadier General Uguchu Unachuhu, the acting general officer commanding 7th Division and commander of Sector 1, Operation Haring Kai. Delivering the judgment, President of the Court Martial, Brigadier General Mohammed Abdullahi, found Sergeant Rafael Amey, Sergeant Ejiga Musa, and Lance Corporal Patrick Ocheje guilty, and sentenced them to life imprisonment, while Corporal Omito Yerufus was sentenced to 15 years in prison. The soldiers were convicted of multiple offenses, including theft, unlawful dealing in ammunition, and aiding the enemy, all punishable under the Armed Forces Act. Sergeant Rafael Amey, who served as an armorer at the 7th Division garrison, was found guilty of conspiring with a diseased colleague to steal ammunition from the division's armory. He reportedly collaborated with police officers to conceal the weapons in bags of beans and smuggle them to Enugu and Ebony States, where they were supplied to criminals. The chief judge of the Federal Capital Territory, Husseini Baba Isouf, has discharged over 35 inmates awaiting trial across the two custodial centers in the Kefi local government area of Nasarawa State. Baba Isouf, who discharged the inmates during a visit to the Medium Security Custodial Center in Kefi, said the essence of the prison visit was to ensure that those who are not supposed to be in the facility are allowed to go free. He explained that the exercise would be a routine one to ensure that people are not allowed to suffer unnecessarily in custody when they should not be there. The intervention was facilitated by the Public and Private Development Center, a non-governmental organization leading to the release of the inmates, made up of 33 males and two females. One of the males, Mohammed Abdullahi, was discharged after being incarcerated for a year without a single appearance in any court in Nigeria. Director of the Institute of Management and Technology, IMT Enugu, Professor Cosmos Obodo, says it is an error to discriminate between Bachelor of Science, BSc, and Higher National Diploma, HND, holders in the employment market. Speaking on the morning show on Signature TV, Obodo said there is no basis for the discrimination, noting that HND holders spend five years, broken down into two years for OND, one year of industrial training, and two years for HND as against four years spent by university graduates. He stated that any employer who discriminates between the two certificate holders should be sanctioned.
Many of these graduates, whether they are coming from the university system or whether they are coming from the polytechnics, all come out with the same degrees and diplomas and are all seeking for jobs that are non-existent. If the polytechnic students were properly trained and guaranteed skills, they will come out not as job seekers, but as job creators. And so we're doing everything we can now to reset the paradigm, reset the paradigm. As a result, my campaign in IMT today is the new IMT, the new IMT where every student is supposed to graduate with one diploma and one skill. And that's what we're campaigning, that whatever you are studying, you must graduate with your diploma, whether it's national diploma or higher national diploma, as well as one skill. So that once you graduate and come out, you will not be looking for the non-existent jobs. You would rather have enough skills to go out there and start your own business. Anybody who discriminates against any applicant can attract a lawsuit. So legally speaking, legally speaking, the employer can be sued for employment discrimination. They used to employ degree holders, okay, and place them at a higher level and at a higher pay. And so you find somebody who went to the polytechnic, who by any way spent more years than the first degree holder, who studied any program in the university for four years. Where the polytechnic system is, anybody who graduated with a higher national diploma spent five years, two years at the national diploma, then one whole year for the industrial training before you can come back and enroll for the higher national diploma. So by the time the HND guy comes out, he has spent five years, and the Bachelor holder spent four years. Yet, when they go out to seek employment, they will employ the degree holder higher, pay him higher than the person who spent five years. So you can now see how we created this discrimination by our employment policy unwittingly. And now it has turned out to haunt us. But there's good news, and the good news is that the federal government, MBTE, all the agencies have now fought and they have harmonized this. They have harmonized it. So that's the beginning. Many of...
The director maintained that polytechnics produce highly skilled and professional graduates who fit into various sectors globally due to their practical skill sets and hands-on training. He called for increased investment by the federal government in the education sector, particularly in polytechnics, to discourage brain drain and encourage graduates to stay back after graduation.
What is top-up? Top-up is simply saying that if you have a HND, you can now enroll in any program and spend one extra year or two extra years, depending, and that's the top-up. And now earn that additional qualification without having to go back and start from scratch. Because somebody with ND degree, diploma, or HND has advanced knowledge in the field. The person has advanced knowledge in the field. And more importantly, that person with ND degree or HND is more experienced than the students who study theoretically without having any hands-on experience. So top-up is good. It's an incentive, and I'm happy that many polytechnics are doing, and IMT is already working on including it in our programs.
Professor Obodo highlighted the significance of partnerships and collaboration between educational institutions, industries, and other stakeholders to provide students with practical skills and training to provide a workforce that will be relevant to the society.
I must compliment the Teth Fund for all they are doing. Their intervention is serving us tremendously, providing all these equipments, helping us with training, and all that. And that's helping to complement the support of the state government. You know, IMT is a state polytechnic, and the state government is doing so very well in terms of salvation and support logistics. When we started, I took what we call academic audits of the entire programs in IMT, and I discovered, to my dismay, that majority of our programs had lost, or rather, had expired accreditation status. And so we needed to embark on the re-accreditation of these programs, as many as 70% of them. And we immediately tackled them, because I know from my experience that any program that has lost accreditation, and yet you're still running that program, training students under that program, is analogous to any doctor or pharmacist who is dispensing expired drugs. And so I didn't want to be associated with that, and so I immediately declared a state of emergency with respect to academic programs, and we started from there. I'm happy to report that in April this year, we subjected all those programs to re-accreditation, and we successfully re-accredited all of them full accreditation for all those programs. And so that's the starting point for us, and I think that was also foundational, because any tertiary institution is an institution where you must have valid programs, accredited programs, so that what you are dispensing to the students will be valid knowledge.
Cote d'Ivoire and Enugu State have resolved to deepen economic cooperation between the West African nation and Nigeria, with a particular focus on Enugu State. The ambassador extraordinary and plenipotentiary of Cote d'Ivoire to Nigeria, Kalilu Charey, and governor of Enugu State, Dr. Peter Mbah, made the decision when the ambassador visited the government house in Enugu. Ambassador Charey, who was accompanied during the visit by the chairman and chief executive officer of Innocent Vehicle Manufacturing Company, Chief Innocent Chupuma, underscored the strong bond between Nigeria and Cote d'Ivoire. He expressed his appreciation for the invitation by the chairman of Innocent Vehicle Manufacturing to tour the world-class facilities in Enugu, and commended Governor Mbah for making Enugu welcoming to both visitors and businesses. Governor Mbah explained that his administration set out to ensure that it created an environment where businesses could thrive and where capital would be safe and security assured. He said the administration had set out a blueprint to achieve a quantum leap to grow the economy exponentially, which he said would come through collaboration, partnership, and unlocking of private capital. No fewer than five communities in the Ibaji Local Government Area of Kogi State are currently underwater due to flooding. The Executive Secretary of the State Emergency Management Agency, Alhaji Mukta Atima, disclosed this on Wednesday in Lokoja, the state capital, saying the floods have completely submerged Ibaji Local Government Area in the state's eastern senatorial district. He warned communities along the riverbanks to relocate immediately to safer grounds. Atima, who led the emergency response and critical team on an advocacy visit to the state commissioner for health, Dr. Adams Abdulaziz, said the state is no longer safe owing to rising water levels in the rivers Niger and Benue. Atima explained that according to charts from experts and dam managers across the country, excessive water began pouring into the rivers Niger and Benue from Tuesday night, causing the rivers to overflow. Atima noted that the state Ministry of Health plays a key role in disaster management and informed the commissioner about the rising water levels, stressing that the next 72 hours will be critical. He commended the Health Commissioner for proactive measures last year that ensured zero casualties. Responding, Dr. Abdulaziz said the ministry is responsible not only for healthcare services, but also for human services, and is fully prepared to mitigate any disaster in the state. The National Drug Law Enforcement Agency, NDLA, is proposing mandatory drug integrity tests for drivers seeking licenses. The NDLA chairman, retired brigadier general Bubammarua, disclosed this in a goodwill message at the national summit of the Special Marshals of the Federal Road Safety Corps, FRSC, on Wednesday in Abuja. Marua, who was represented by a deputy commandant general of narcotics, DCGN, Mr. Umoru Ambrose, described FRSC and NDLA as partners in progress. The test, according to the agency, is part of efforts to curb the rising cases of drug-influenced road crashes across the country. He emphasized that while the cause was on the roads to prevent accidents and assist victims, the NDLA is focused on addressing the underlying causes of crashes, security problems, and health challenges. The NDLA boss further said that the planned collaboration will enable FRSC and NDLA operatives to access both drivers and passengers during joint highway operations. President Bola Tunabu has described Nigeria's bid to host the 2030 Commonwealth Games as a dream that must become reality. In a post on his official X account on Wednesday, Tunabu, who noted that no African nation has ever hosted the games, stated that bringing the 2030 edition to Nigeria would send a powerful message that Africa is vital to the future of the Commonwealth. Nigeria is scheduled to present its final bid to host the 2030 Commonwealth Games before the event evaluation committee on Wednesday. The Nigerian delegation is led by Shehu Diko, president of the Nigeria Sports Commission, alongside the commission's director general, Bukola Olapade. The Commonwealth Games is a multi-sport event held every four years, primarily featuring countries that are former territories of the United Kingdom. In April, the Nigerian Olympic Committee, NOC, announced that it has met the March 28, 2025 deadline for expression of interest to bid for the 2030 Commonwealth Games. Nigeria lost a bid to host the 2014 Commonwealth Games to Glasgow. Up next is business news.
The Central Bank of Nigeria has lowered its key interest rate to 27%, a 50 basis point cut from the previous 27.5%. This marks the first rate reduction in five years. According to the Central Bank, the move is designed to stimulate growth and encourage foreign investment inflows with expectations of attracting up to $1 billion monthly. Analysts say the decision reflects efforts to balance monetary tightening with the need to ease borrowing costs for businesses and households. The CBN maintains that the cut will not derail its fight against inflation, but instead position the economy for stronger recovery in the months ahead. Nigeria's diesel business is fast losing ground as natural gas emerges the cleaner and cheaper alternative. With over 200 trillion cubic feet of gas reserves, expats say industries converting generators to dual-fuel systems are saving 60% to 80% on fuel costs with conversion expenses recovered within months. Case studies show factories and transport fleets already cutting bills significantly through compressed natural gas and liquefied natural gas. However, infrastructure remains a challenge, with fewer than 15 CNG stations nationwide compared to over 30,000 petrol and diesel outlets. Stakeholders are urging government incentives, financing support, and stronger public awareness to drive the transition. Vice President Kashim Chatima says Nigeria is targeting a minimum of 7% annual economic growth. He made the announcement on Tuesday while representing President Bola Tunabu at the 80th United Nations General Assembly in New York.
Shatima explained that the target will be driven by macroeconomic stability, improved productivity and strategic investment in infrastructure, healthcare, agriculture and education. He added that the government's renewed hope agenda provides the framework to achieve these goals. The vice president also met with international partners, including Namibia, to strengthen bilateral relations and attract investment. Shatima stressed that global collaboration and private sector participation are critical if Nigeria is to reach its growth ambitions and secure sustainable development. The Nigerian Port Authority has pledged to deliver a globally competitive, digitally-driven port system. Managing Director Abubakar Dantsoho made the announcement at the United Nations General Assembly. He announced that a port community system on electronic platform linking all port stakeholders will be launched by the first quarter of twenty-twenty-six to ensure paperless transactions and faster cargo clearance. Already, digital reforms are showing results with non-oil exports rising by nineteen point six percent in the first half of twenty-twenty-five. Other measures introduced include electronic barrier systems, truck call-up management and joint boarding apps. Dantsoho also highlighted sustainability plans such as improving barge and rail connectivity and piloting emission reduction projects at Lecky Port. He stressed that these gaps will position Nigeria's ports to compete with the best globally. And that's business news on global news in Abuja. I am Thompson Ime Nated. Still to come, police on alert after violent protests demanding statehood for India's Ladakh. Slovakia questioned hypocrisy of some in EU amid Russia LNG ban talks. Do stay with us. Hundreds of South Africans fired up their grills for Heritage Day and a shot at a world record. At Pretoria's Loftus Verstfield Stadium, about two thousand five hundred people gathered for what organizers hoped would be the largest bribe ever recorded, with participants grilling simultaneously to beat the Guinness World Record for most people bribing at once. A bribe is a central social gathering where people come together to cook and share food. Proceeds will support the Truck for Mandela One Million Meals campaign, which aims to feed one million people on World Food Day next year, part of a broader push to end hunger in South Africa. Guinness officials on site said it would take at least two days to verify the attempt. If confirmed, South Africa will hold the title for the world's largest bribe.
It means a lot, uniting the nation in this time, you know, facing a lot of difficulties in our economy and politics, but this brought us together. The Rainbow Nation succeeds.
Bribe to me means being together, sharing special moments. We are doing it internationally today. Are you ready for us to break the record, the world's biggest bribe?
What better way to celebrate the enduring legacy of Madiba? By now putting more meaning to the bribe, by making sure that we don't only bribe to break the record, but we bribe and also use the opportunity to feed those who are hungry.
So the current record, and it is the most people barbecuing, grilling, bribing simultaneously, the current record is two thousand two hundred and twenty, and that was set in Japan in twenty-twenty-three. So they're trying to beat that record. The final piece of evidence I need to review is video evidence taken from overhead and from the side. So I can review that to make sure that those numbers match up everything that's written in the statements. And I can't do that until the video is given to me, so it won't be for another day or two yet.
Ugandan opposition leader Robert Kyangulani, also known as Bobby Wine, was cleared on Wednesday to run for president, setting up a second challenge against longtime president Yoweri Museveni, who is seeking a seventh term. Robert previously ran in twenty-twenty-one, coming second, but rejected the results alleging widespread fraud, ballot stuffing and violence against his supporters. After being declared a candidate in Kampala, Wine argued that Uganda's problem isn't lack of wealth, given its natural resources, but rather poor leadership that terrorizes and exploits people instead of serving them.
High Justice Yawakama Odeni Simon, being the returning officer for the nomination of presidential candidates, declare Kyagulani Sen Tamaropati that you nominated the candidate in respect of the presidential elections twenty-twenty-six. He having fulfilled the nomination requirements under the Presidential Election Act, Chapter one seventy-nine of laws of Uganda, you are now a candidate. Congratulations.
Of leadership has been written in blood, the blood and sacrifice of the common people of Uganda, the citizens of Uganda, and yet the leaders who always promised liberation have always delivered oppression. For forty long years, one man and a small group of his relatives and friends have ruled our country on gunpoint. They have looted our nation and turned every institution of government into a tool of oppression. We have voted before. We have won elections before and we have been rigged before. But the election this time is no usual election, brothers and sisters. We are going into this election as a way of protesting against the injustice that has been occasioned to us for the last forty years. We are protesting and the protest begins now.
His National Unity Platform, NUP, has accused Museveni's government of continuous kidnapping, illegal detention and torture of supporters. Thailand and Cambodia should scale back their military presence along their shared border and work together to de-escalate tensions, Thailand's new foreign minister told reporters on Thursday. Formerly sworn into office along with Prime Minister Anatin Chanvirko a day earlier, Shihassak Puyanketio stressed the need to uphold the ceasefire agreed by Thailand and Cambodia at the end of a deadly five-day conflict in July. He told reporters on his first day as foreign minister that his priority is to secure peace between the two Southeast Asian neighbors and called for a withdrawal of troops and heavy weapons from border areas.
So I wanted to maybe pose this question to my Cambodian friend. You know, we have two paths that we can take. The path that we've taken is path of confrontation, which only leads to more losses. The other path that we desire to take, but we cannot take it alone, is the path of peace, path that benefits our two countries. So again, we cannot take this path alone. And so we have to work to take this path together.
Tension over disputed areas exploded into armed conflicts in July, including the use of artillery fire and fighter jet sorties. At least forty-eight people were killed and hundreds and thousands temporarily displaced in the heaviest fighting between the two countries in over a decade. The fighting ended after both countries agreed a ceasefire brokered in Malaysia on July twenty-eighth, and the border has remained mostly calm since, though tensions continue to simmer. Police officers and security personnel patrolled streets in India's Himalayan region of Ladakh on Thursday, a day after violent protests demanding statehood for the federal territory and job quarters for local residents, killed at least four and injured dozens. Streets in the main city of Leh were quiet with shuttered shops, deserted roads and dozens of vehicles with shattered windows as a curfew was imposed. Late on Wednesday, India's Ministry of Home Affairs said that the protests were triggered by proactive speeches by activist Sonam Wachuk, who had been on hunger strike since September ten. The Buddhist Muslim enclave lost its autonomy in twenty-nineteen when it was carved out of Jamu and Kashmir state by India's Prime Minister, Narendra Modi's government, and placed under the direct administration of New Delhi. Protesters led by Wachuk also want Ladakh to be given special status that would allow the creation of elected local bodies to protect its tribal areas. India's Home Ministry has been in talks with Ladakh's leaders since twenty-twenty-three and has said it is looking into their demands. The next round of discussions is scheduled for October sixth. Slovakia pushed back Wednesday against growing pressure to cut Russian energy imports, calling out the hypocrisy of some European countries that have actually increased gas purchases from Moscow. Slovakia and Hungary, both EU members with close ties to Russia, argue that their heavy reliance on Russian oil and gas makes a sudden shift too costly as their infrastructure is built around it. The pressure has intensified after US President Biden urged the EU to fully phase out Russian energy. In response, the EU proposed a nineteen sanctions package aiming to end all Russian energy imports by twenty-twenty-seven. Slovak Prime Minister Juraq Blanner warned that Slovakia could lose up to ten billion euros if it breaks long-term contracts running through twenty-thirty-four. He called for possible exemptions, compensation and a broader discussion on high energy prices in Europe.
Used to build the infrastructure, I mean the gas pipeline and crude pipeline for decades. And we don't have any other options which could be sustainable and also to price reasonable and so on. So it takes time to diversify this. So that's why we are calling for some kind of empathy. And the business with Russia and European Union is seventy-nine billion of euro. So what we are going to do, because it's not only Slovakia and Hungary. Do you know that the liquid gas from the Russia raised the last year one-third more in the western part of Europe? So France, Spain and the Netherlands and so on. So can you see the picture is little bit more colorful than black and white? What is the problem? We almost have the same approach to Ukraine crisis or war. Everyone says very clearly in Slovakia that this is a violation of international law. Any forcible change of international recognized border, it's unacceptable for Slovak Republic. Only what we are calling from the beginning, very beginning, that this war doesn't have any military solution. Let's proceed with any diplomatic effort. We were calling for that for more than three and a half year. And once more, I have to state very clearly, if it were for Trump, the peace negotiation would never start.
Russian Foreign Minister Sergei Lavrov in New York. Blanner said Western Europe's LNG imports from Russia had risen by thirty percent last year, questioning the fairness of criticism aimed at Slovakia and Hungary. He also rejected the notion that engaging with Moscow made them black sheep, insisting there is no military solution to the war in Ukraine and dialogue is essential, just as former US President, just as US President Trump once argued. Ukrainian President Vladimir Zelensky urged world powers to help stop Russia's war in his country in a speech to the United Nations on Wednesday, warning of a dangerous arms race that he said the fighting was helping unleash. He called for global rules to curb the use of artificial intelligence in weapons while describing breakneck innovation in the military use of drones. He also accused Russian President Vladimir Putin of seeking to expand his war beyond Ukraine.
Yesterday, we had a good meeting with President Trump and I also spoke with many other strong leaders and together we can change a lot, of course. Of course, we are doing everything to make sure Europe truly helps. And of course, we count on the United States. I appreciate the support we are receiving. Yes, much depends on the G seven and G twenty, but but in the end, peace depends on all of us, on the United Nations. So don't stay silent while Russia keeps dragging this war on. Please speak out and condemn it. Please join us in defending life and international law and order. People are waiting for action. Thank you so much. Slava Ukraini.
Up next is sports news.
Welcome to Sports News on Signature TV. And let's begin with boxing where Edie Hearn has invited an offer from Nigerian promoter Dr. Ezekiel Adamu. He has however revealed that Ghana is currently leading the chase to land Anthony Joshua's first ever fight in Africa. It is now a year since two-time world heavyweight champion AJ last boxed when he was knocked out in the fifth round of his dramatic Wembley Stadium showdown with Daniel Dubois. It is now increasingly unlikely that the thirty-five-year-old will box before the end of twenty-twenty-five, but his promoter Edie Hearn says Joshua will definitely return at some point in the first quarter of twenty-twenty-six. But Hearn says there are yet to open talks with Adamu about the possibility and says Nigeria's West African rivals Ghana are ahead of them in the queue after presenting a very interesting offer. In football, Nigeria's flying eagles rounded off their FIFA under twenty World Cup preparations on a high with a commanding three-one victory over Australia in a friendly match played at the Complejo Deportivo Rukamapu in Santiago, Chile. Goals from Tahir Magana, Orseya Achichi and Charles Agada sealed the win for Aliou's Bayrouzmen, boosting their confidence ahead of the global showpiece. The flying eagles will kick off their World Cup campaign against Norway on Monday, September the twenty-ninth at the Estadio Fisca in Talca. They will then face Saudi Arabia on October the second before rounding off their group stage fixtures against Colombia on October the fifth. Al Ittihad advanced to the round of sixteen of the King's Cup with a one-zero win over Al-Walda on September the twenty-third. Al Ittihad's only goal came when forward Saleh Al-Shahiri scored from the mark in the ninth minute. However, Jeddah-based club dominated throughout, controlling the ball for sixty-four percent of the match. Al Ittihad had eight shots on target compared to three by their second division opponents. They were hungry for a second goal throughout the match, but were thwarted by Al-Walda goalkeeper Abdullah Al-Ohashia, who helped hold them to a single goal, which is all they need to advance in the end. Al-Nasr trusted Jeddah four-zero to advance to the round of sixteen of the King's Cup on September the twenty-third. The Riyadh-based side had no problems dismantling their second division opponents even without their star player Cristiano Ronaldo, who rested on the bench. Al-Nasr opened the scoring early in the first half when a boot from Angelo went off a defender and entered the net just eight minutes into play. Second-half goals by Wesley, Joao Felix and Mohamed Simakan sealed the home team's defeat as Al-Nasr marched to a four-zero win. And that's the size of the package of Sports News on Signature TV. I am Raymond Ken Bata.
And up next is entertainment news.
This is entertainment news. Evicted Big Brother Nigeria housemate Bright Morgan has confirmed that his American girlfriend contacted the organizers of the reality show to evict him from the show, claiming he had a health challenge. He disclosed that the organizers contacted his brother, who then debunked the girlfriend's claim. He explained that if he had a problem, he would have taken a voluntary exit free arts museum, where the exhibition is also being held. Garments including striking red and silver dresses are set among Italian art masterpieces from the Middle Age of the nineteenth century. The retrospective marks the end of an era and the beginning of a new chapter from the iconic brand. And that's the entertainment news. I am Queenet Hookunter for Signature TV.
And that's the news this hour. I am Uchenna Chimdi Olowa. Thanks for watching.